Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to a special committee meeting Tuesday, March 14th at 5:00. We're going to start the meeting with roll call.
Counselperson Aller.
Present.
Counselperson DeBond. Counselperson Elliott.
Here.
Counselperson Garrison.
Here.
Counselperson Morris.
Here.
For our present one is absent.
Thank you. Just a few things before we get started here. This is a committee meeting. We won't be voting. It's just on, you know, making some recommendations so we can work on this ordinance. I guess I just want to say we started this ordinance not to punish anybody or anything like that. It hadn't been updated since 2009, so it was just kind of to do some housekeeping and get things cleared up. I'm glad to see that it's in a committee where we can have some discussion and work with the public and work with us and hopefully come to a good updated version of it. There will be public comment. We'll allow two to three minutes for public comment, so everybody has a chance to speak. I just ask that it's new and different, so other people that want to talk can talk. And with that being said, I guess we'll go on to public comment. We had a sign-up sheet, and I know if you weren't here before and didn't get on the sign-up sheet, once we get through everybody on the sign-up sheet, if you want to talk, then we can have you come to the mic. I'm going to give everybody the opportunity to speak.
Would you like me to read the ordinance?
Yes, I'm sorry.
General Ordinance 2, 2019, Admitting City Code Chapter 6, Article 4, Division 2, Animal Control Regulations.
Thank you. First one on the list is Andrew Hollingsworth. If you would, when you come to the mic, please restate your name and your address.
Hi. I'm Andrew Hollingsworth. I live at 200 Gardendale, and I was looking through the changes in the code, and we had been talking with my son, who is seven, about getting started with raising chickens, actually, and noticed the new restrictions on that in the code proposal. And we want to promote him being responsible and make sure he does his homework and guide him in that process, help him become a responsible adult someday. And we thought that the raising of chickens, keeping track of them, making sure he's doing everything he needs to do, would be a great thing. So there's a personal connection there for me, raising my son, making sure he's a responsible adult someday and can come to meetings like this. And then the other side of it is just looking into how chickens are and other fowls are treated in the state of Indiana. I looked at the Indianapolis code, and I was very intrigued. They do have some restrictions on chicken ownership. You can't have more than 12 adults. I looked at the code this afternoon to make sure I had the most up-to-date version. And so they do have a restriction on that. They want to make sure there aren't too many on one lot, so it's by lot. They do have restrictions for how far from the lot line they are if you don't live on the premises. If you do live on their premises, the only restriction is that you can't have an odor issue that extends beyond the lot line. And then looking at the, oh, what was it? The poultry association for Indiana. The state provides free testing, so if there is a health concern, there's free testing available for any of the animals. And that's kind of where I was coming from. I don't know if that had been thought through or not in terms of that part of the code. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council for Mr. Hollingsworth?
This has been a big topic. And we've been talking about this for the past few years. Again, Lori, I'd like to ask you to come up and give your opinion. Lori Tharp's our code enforcement. She's the guru. We really follow her lead and stuff. Look at Shagley getting up. He's already. Look at him. Yeah, I know. Like a lawyer. Lori, your opinions, I mean, we've talked about this a little bit.
Well, I fully appreciate the council getting this group together, this committee. However, I'm not in favor of a chicken ordinance in Vigo County and the city limits because, number one, we don't have enough help in our office. Number two, we have a hard time getting the people that live in our community to take care of their dogs and cats, let alone a chicken. And we have been called out on probably, we probably get four or five phone calls a year, chickens running loose. And we pick them up, and the shelter doesn't take chickens, so...
So what do you do?
Well, we've been lucky. We find people at work who live on farms, and they take the chickens. They won't take the roosters, though. So if we get a rooster, and I can't find anybody to take it, he's dispatched. He's euthanized. I understand people want the eggs, they're good eggs, but to find a group of people in Terre Haute, and I know that there's chicken coops in Terre Haute. I know people have chickens. I know where they're at. Their coops are maintained. They take care of the birds, and we don't get complaints on them, so...
No complaints on the smell?
No complaints on the smell, because these coops are well taken care of. But some of the people that have had baby chicks before, Easter's coming up. It's a good thing. Bunnies and chicks, real popular, especially with the chickens. They think it's cute, and you can't buy just one chicken at Rural King. You have to buy them in lots of six, because they don't really do well as one. And I believe that if you get chickens, it's going to come under the six animal rule. So if you have three chickens and four dogs, somebody's got to go, because I'm not going to allow you to have more than six animals on the property. They're going to try to put it under a domestic pet. They do attract raccoons and possums and foxes and coyotes, because once the smell's in the air that there's chickens around, these other wild animals are going to start coming into the city. And then if your chicken gets loose and a feral cat gets a hold of it, or a cat or a dog, you know, am I going to prosecute them for killing your chicken? I mean, it really opens up a huge array of problems for us. I believe chickens belong on a farm, not in a residential neighborhood.
Thank you, Lori. I wanted to get that out after getting going and get started. Now, Mr. Shagley, you've done some research, and you wanted to speak.
I've got him on the list.
He's, oh, did I jump the list? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I got you.
You can wait? Okay. And so that's where I wanted to start. It's still open for a lot of discussion, and I see the benefits of 4H, that type of thing, too. So there's a lot more dialogue, I think, that needs to be put into this.
Is there anyone else on the council has questions for Andrew? Okay. So we'll go on to the next one. Len Mullins.
Len Mullins, 2200 Spang. And I'm here to, of course, talk about the honeybee, the apiaries. There's just several things that I think that would restrict us from providing that service for pollinators. One of them, of course, is the size of the lot that we would have to maintain in order to have bees. I think presently it's 10,000 square feet. That's 100 by 100 feet, and I believe that most of the lots in Terre Haute are not 100 by 100. They're probably closer to 100 by 50 than the 100 by 100. And with a 75 foot from the property line, well, there's no place in a yard less than 100 by 100. But even 100 by 100, you can't have them in your yard 75 feet from the line. Second thing would be the number of hives. Most beekeepers will only keep the number of bees in their yard that they have enough flowers and trees that would pollinate them. So they are self-limiting for the number that would be in the yard. Also, the registration. We already have, the DNR has a registration for the apiaries, but it's not required. If you do so, that's okay, but they haven't required us to actually register those. And the other thing that concerns me would be the costs. I know that I've given you the literature on Marion County and Indianapolis. They charge a $50 fee if you are a dealer. You would have enough hives to be able to sell them, to sell the honey, and I think that that would limit the number of beekeepers here in town as well. Some of them probably would not want to do that. So I appreciate all of you listening and hearing our complaints as such, and so we can work through it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone on the council have any questions for Len?
Len, was that fee Indianapolis yearly or just a one-time fee?
It was a one-time fee, is my understanding.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Garrison?
Len, I saw that some of the ordinances that are out there have requirements for training. If you're going to be a beekeeper and have hives, one, I think, said 16 hours of training minimum before you can do that. What are your thoughts on that? Is that necessary?
I don't think it's necessary, because the people that are interested, they're going to find someone else that's a practice beekeeper, and they're going to get the advice out. And we have several in here this evening that are new beekeepers that come to our club meeting. We have 40 lifetime members with our club that we meet monthly at St. Mary of the Woods Violet Center. And we do training there each time we do something that would help the beekeeper in the yard. So there's a training available. Hate for you to have to put a limited number of hours to do that.
That's great. When do you guys meet?
We meet the third Wednesday of each month.
Okay. Open to the public?
It is.
All right.
We encourage them to come.
What's the location?
Where's that?
I'm sorry?
Where at?
It's at the White Violet Center, St. Mary of the Woods. And yes, the time is at 7:00.
Thanks, Len.
So, but you, in discussion, you and I had talked prior to this, but you feel comfortable with five or 10 feet buffer lines?
I think so, yes. Five would be better.
Five would be better. Lots less, having less than 10,000 square feet, we have four hives. And you think you...
Well, a good reason why that we should have more is when we go through the winter, we're going to lose at least a third of our bees.
Every winter?
Every winter. I started with eight hives in the yard and had lost three.
So you're thinking eight with something less than 10,000 square feet is not pushing it?
Yes. I know, I have had as many as 12 in the yard that have found out there's just not enough area for them to cover. They have to go further away to get their food, their nectar. So eight, between eight and 12, there's a good range there. There's 100,000 bees in there in that difference, so, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Len.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do have one more. Len, why are you up here? Some ordinances said limits to backyard only. Any thoughts on that?
I would not want to put them in the front yard. So I think backyard, the side yard is conducive to it. That would be sound, but certainly not...
I mean, it seems to be common sense that we could be backyard anyway.
I don't know of any that's in the front yard.
Right. Do you think that's something that needs to be put in our language in our ordinance or not necessarily an issue?
Well, I guess I would say this. If you have a big front yard, I mean, along the distance there, the bees will come out of the hive, and they're going to go airborne to go to where they're going to get their nectar. So I wouldn't think that you would need to include it.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Len, one more thing. I'm sorry. We were discussing if a neighbor has a child who's allergic to bee stings. What do you say? How do you address it? How do you, how do you work it out together? I'm, being a parent, I'm sure you're very concerned. You know, you've got 1,000, 100,000 bees in your neighbor's backyard.
I have a son that is allergic to bees, and he's in the bee yard every time that he comes to visit. We do protect him when he gets in the hive to help me with the hive by wearing the veil and the gloves and the full suit. And I can tell you that I have six grandsons that run around the yard when they're there continuously, and only two of them have been stung in the last eight years.
So it's a matter of education?
It's education.
Okay.
And I have a little dog that runs around. He respects those bee hives. They talk to him more than once, and he goes away from them. And the neighbor right next door, they had a young one, and they've been educated with about the bees, and so they're comfortable with having that little one, looking forward to the summer to come outside. So, but it is, it is a big concern, though.
Well, yeah, and I was going to ask counsel or Eddie, so what happens if someone starts a bee hive and the neighbor says, "I don't want it because my children are susceptible to bee stings"?
It'd be a private civil matter. It's like, sometimes an injunction, and, you know, if this thing did occur, there's a question about whether or not that's some type of a nuisance.
If it's a bee, if it's a honeybee.
I didn't know. I just asked.
These are the number of bees that we have in our mission here. And I know a lot of people, they call us and say, "We have a bee problem, and I'd love to come and take care of it." Nine out of 10 times, it's not a honeybee. So it would be really difficult to say which bee stung it. Because our pet bees are not aggressive.
Thank you.
I'm going to write on that. I've got 300 different species of bees in Indiana alone.
Right. Yeah. And I'm just throwing stuff against the wall, because I was asked those questions, so... And I think the experts need to defend it.
I think the beekeeper will work with the neighbor. If it requires a fence in order for them to have that, they're going to put up a fence.
And who was telling me about the women grass oil? Yeah. They were going into your neighbor's pool. Wintergreen oil.
We don't want wintergreen oil.
And you put them on the fence posts.
We don't want wintergreen oil. No bees.
No bees. Thank you. I know.
Thank you. Any more questions? Next on the list is Tom Barn.
My name's Thomas Bear. I live at 10 Fort Harrison Parkway.
I apologize. I'm sorry.
That's fine. Common mistake. Yes, I've been a beekeeper for six years now, live in North Terre Haute. I've had four hives after it taking me that long to get to four hives. And last fall, I lost a hive, and this spring, today, I opened a hive, and it was dead. So now I'm down to two. So working my way up. I think that four to six hives is more than enough. I have an acre or quarter of ground, but I can see people like Len who have a small area that don't have any problem at all. I would think that the ordinance should be written in a way that you wouldn't have any more than a 50-foot buffer between the property lines. He's also right that if you get more than 10 feet away from four hives, you can sit and watch them all day, and you're not going to get stung. But there, I see that in Bloomington, they have an ordinance where it's 50 feet to the boundary line for them, and then they also have, like you said, they don't have any front yard bees, which is, you know, I don't know anyone that has bees in their front yard. And then the idea of the education part, the 18 and 16 hours, I don't think that's, because most people, they go into beekeeping, do a massive amount of research before they go out and spend $300 on a hive. You know, it costs you 300, $250 for a hive, and that ends with no bees, and you spend another $150 on bees. So a lot of, whenever you do it, it's a fairly large expense, and you have a lot more than 16 hours. And our club here in Vigo County has a pretty good-sized membership. I'm a lifetime member. And it has, there's a lot of resources, these people, that'll help you if you have any questions. One standing rule, unwritten rule, is that when you have bees, that you go to your neighbors and ask them if it's all right with them if you have bees.
Being a good neighbor.
Just being a good neighbor, you know? And if somebody says, "No, we really, we have a child, we're free for the child," and they say, "No," well, then you're done. You know, so that's normally, when I, I started my hives, I went around to all four or five of my neighbors and asked them if they had any problem with that at all. Other than that, I would, and then on the chicken, you know, I grew up in Edgewood Grove on, right on Fruit Ridge, and my next-door neighbor was Dr. Drummy, and he had chickens all the time we grew up. So I really don't have a problem with someone, I'm going to have four to six chickens, like their ordinance in Bloomington says. We only have only females inside the city limit and only a number of six, you know, at the most, because that's more than enough to feed you. You know, they lay a lot of eggs. But other than that, thank you for listening.
Councilman Garrison?
Thomas, you said if you wanted to get started, you could buy a hive at about $250 per hive. Is that correct?
Yes. You can go to Rural King, and you can buy an unassembled or an assembled hive for a Rural King or Tractor Supply will sell you everything you need to have, to have a hive. And then you're still going to have to buy a queen.
What's that cost?
That's about $150.
Okay, so $400 in it. How much does, if you're doing this for profit, is this a very profitable venture?
Only if you're going to do it for a long time. And there are some people, you know, like, I have it because I have a backyard garden. I have raised bed gardens. I have, I have the bees to supplement my garden, you know? And I have, whenever I get extra honey, I will sell it. You know, they, my bees have actually paid for all of their own equipment. I'm pretty much breaking even. Now that I have two empty hives to fill, I'm going to try, the next step in my education is to try to raise my own queens, right? To replenish the four hives that I have. So, but yeah, you can, you can go, when I originally started, I went to, it's called Riley Bee Farm, and I bought an entire hive with bees for $150. It was an old hive. It had been re-manufactured, however you want to say it. It was an old hive that a guy had had, and he had got out of beekeeping because of his age. And I, he had sold it to his friend, and I bought it off of him. But if it was $150, it was one super, the bottom and the top, and that was pretty much it. It didn't have a honey super on top or anything like that. All that I had to add later. But you can't, when you have your first, when you have your first year of beekeeping, you don't get any honey. You keep all the honey that they produce, you allow them to keep for the year. You don't actually get any, if you were to, being for profit of some kind, you would have to wait to the second year. So it's a long-term strategy to get, to make any real money out of it. And most people, like Len and myself, we don't, we're not into it for this big cash, you know, that thing. So it's more for the honey, it's more for the, to have the bees themselves in the neighborhood to help out the, our flowers and our gardens and all that kind of thing. And then a supplemental, it gives you, you know, a little extra money if you want to sell it. But I've got 75 pounds of honey right now sitting in jars in my house that I haven't sold. It's not because I'm, again, I'm not really super worried about selling it. Bringing concern will tell you, it's like gold. It doesn't go anywhere. It'd be there for 3,000 years if it doesn't, hasn't been contaminated, you know, so... But it takes a long time to get up to the point where you're selling a lot of honey. And you, like me, you know, I had four hives last spring. I got 70-some pounds of honey. I've them down to two hives now, and the winter's not over. It's still springtime. I don't know. I may come out, and it may end up with one hive, or I may end up with no hives. When I first started, six years ago, the winter, my hive, actually, my single hive made it through the winter. There were lots of beekeepers in this area that lost 16, 17, 30 hives, and they've been beekeepers for years and years. You know, so it's not, it's not an industrial-sized thing in your backyard. You're not going to make a bunch of money. And they'll, you'll be lucky to do like I did, where they actually pay for themselves. You know, they buy their own equipment, and I can go up to the Amish and buy new equipment. Then, I mean, it's, to have it, you'll have it for the honey itself and to help your farm for people that are in the back. That's pretty much, it's just a hobby for most people.
Okay.
You know, you, I mean, there are things in Chicago where there's hundreds of thousands of hives, but that's industrial stuff.
Great.
But I think that, you know, anything over 50 feet is overkill from property to property line. Well, I live down on the river, so a quarter of my property I can't use at any one time because it's in the flood plain. So I have to limit myself to my side yard, which even though it's a pretty good-sized yard, it's probably, my hives are less than 75 feet from my neighbor. But I, like I said, before I even started, I went and asked them if it would be all right for me to do that.
Sure. Great.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Is there any other questions from the council? Okay. Next person on the list is Bob Mason.
Hello. My name's Bob Mason, 2516 Park Street, Terre Haute. I worked at the Tribune Star for, yeah, about 40 years. Been a professional musician around the low-vash valley for over 60, and that tells you how old I am. Anyway, I was also president of International Print and Graphics Communication Institute for years, so, you know, I know a little bit about rules, regulations, and ordinances. Anyway, about a decade ago, I worked with councilman Todd Mason and Robin Morton, who at the time was the director of the White Violet Center at St. Mary's College. After doing a lot of research, I wrote up a series of rules and regulations for definitions and OSUN code and so ordinances for tanning small flocks of hens in the city. A copy of that draft is in the file folders I passed out earlier. There's also in there a newspaper article by Jane Santucci from the Tribune Star back in 2013, which discusses Midwest cities, including Champaign, Illinois, changing their ordinances to allow chicken raising and the benefits of chickens. When I say chickens, I'm talking about hens. Roosters should be illegal. City chickens are also legal in Evansville, Bloomington, Indianapolis, including Zionsville, Avon, and several other cities in Indiana. New York City has long been allowed to have chickens. The birds live in urban areas such as Chicago, Portland, Seattle, and other big cities. 2008, which was, you know, over a decade ago, a Newsweek magazine article reported that 65% of the marriages of larger cities allow keeping of chickens. I could easily go on and on here for an hour or so, including the myths and facts about city chickens and detailed ordinances across the country concerning backyard chickens and hens, but all that is detailed information in the file folders I passed out. One last note, chicken coops. Chicken coops can be architecturally blended with surrounding homes. Coop tours are expanding across the nation and are a source of equal tourism revenue. Cities that host coop tours include Austin, Salt Lake City, Raleigh, Los Angeles, and many other cities. There are designer chicken coops, one by Williams Sonoma and others, that actually have skylights, systems for diverting and using rainwater, solar power, along with timers and lights that turn on and off and open and close doors. Coops built with wheels so they can be maneuvered around lawns, which is an efficient way to fertilize. And last note, one thing is for sure. Raising chickens is a different hobby than what was in the past. So that's basically what I got to say. Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
How much is a chicken coop tour?
I don't know.
I've never heard that one before. That's good.
In these articles I'm speaking, a lot of them are like a decade old.
Is that right?
You know, so...
That's, I know.
Any other questions from the council? Okay. Thank you. Next up is Richard Shagley.
Good evening, Madam President. Fellow members of the council, my name is Richard Shagley. I'm here tonight as Richard Shagley. I'm here tonight as Richard Shagley at 10 Bogart Drive. I first want to thank you and applaud you for looking at this ordinance. I have spent some time looking at it prior to these changes. I don't find it extremely reader-friendly. My opinion's probably not the only one that thinks that. And I tell you what, this revision doesn't make any better. It appears that as long as I have a carriage, I can have a horse. So, I can have 10 horses, but I can't have a couple hens, beautiful hens. I just, I'm confused by that. But, so I think we ought to, I think we ought to really look at this. You've made a great first step. Let's look at the whole thing and clean it up so it's clear. And so, people, when they look, they know what you can and can't do. So, I applaud you on that. I'd also ask you to look at pools and their safety because there's some problems with that, we can talk about that later. But thank you very much. The first issue with enforcement, you know, I've heard that, and I've pondered that, you know, the thing about chickens is unfortunately, and there's probably some groups that won't like this, but Mother Nature is the ultimate enforcer of a chicken farmer. If you're not a responsible chicken farmer, you won't have to worry about being a chicken farmer. Mother Nature is cruel. You know, unlike a dog, you know, you can come home late from work and your dog's going to be fine. But you come home late from work and it's dark, you may not have any chickens left. You know, it's a lot of work. It's rewarding, but with that reward comes a lot of work. You know, I, whether or not you legalize or clear up so it's clearly not legal to have chickens, I don't think there's going to be a rush of people that want to get chickens. I think you'll have your Easter rush, but they probably won't make it to Memorial Day. You know, I think that, except for the most responsible person I've heard in a long time waiting for this to be legal before his son can get chickens, I think most people who want chickens have chickens. And I also think probably on that same front, who, the people who want bees have bees. But I applaud you for looking at both of those. And I also applaud you for allowing us tonight to come and speak and, and listen to us. So, I guess if it's not clear already, I believe chickens should be legal. I believe hens only, no roosters. People ask me why, and I say, you know, roosters can be mean and they can lead to more chickens. You know, I think the eggs are important. We heard about, from the, from the bees, about as far as a mentor, I have a chicken mentor. Lives in the county, so he's legal. But, he has a child with severe allergy, food allergies, and one of those allergies is food. But, his son can eat their eggs. You know, one of the things that has sparked my interest in this is, my wife's book club a couple years ago read a book about food. And one of the key things I took away from this is, why would you eat anything if you didn't know what it was? When you look at that label list of ingredients, if you don't know what it is, why would you eat it? And then I made the mistake of watching a movie called Food Incorporated, and then Forks Over Knives. If you have watched those, I'll give you my number, I've got a source for good eggs, and I'm sure they'll sell them to you. Because if you knew what was going on in our food, and even if you go to the store, the supermarket and says organic eggs, free range, that's a misnomer. It's, it's, they're not. They're just fighting within a loophole of government regulation, which can be troublesome at times. So, again, I don't think legalizing chickens is going to create a lot of new owners because it is, it is difficult to do. And, you know, as far as, again, with the enforcement, we've spoken to the Purdue Extension, who's put us in touch with some people, the poultry group that are affiliated with 4H. And, we've been in discussion with, and they would take hens if, if there was ever a case where they came upon a house where someone had 30 instead of six, or 12, whatever's legal, or 17. So, you know, and again, I don't think you'd have to take them away so much as give them a notice, give them time to take care of it, and then if they don't find them, and that helps with our financial situation. You know, on the, on this rare scenario where, you know, someone moves out and leaves their chicken coop, that'll take care of itself unfortunately, with, again, with Mother Nature. So, although, you know, with anything, whether it's bees, whether it's chickens, whether it's a vicious dog or a trampoline, there's some responsibility that the homeowner has to take and communication between neighbors. You know, I'd rather live next door to someone with bees and chickens than trampoline. Because my guess is if you go to a hospital or a regional hospital, the emergency nurse nurse, there's more people going in because they've got hurt on a trampoline than by getting pecked by a hen or stunned by a bee. So, I would just ask that you look at that, listen to people in, other people for chickens, I don't know how many like the half chickens are here. It's kind of trick back, because you stand up there and say, I have chickens, please legalize them. We've got to back up the people who you're scared of because they could come and, and you're of your chickens. And I've, I've heard people say that they're very soothing. There's something about looking out your back window and seeing a chicken walking around, and they provide all kinds of comfort, and that's a, I think that's a benefit to people. Whether you find comfort in whatever it is, reading the book or watching chick, whatever it is, if happy people, happy life, happy place, what's wrong with that? So, again, please consider legalizing chickens. You know, the, the amount of chickens can be discussed later and maybe depending on the size of the lot and whatnot. But, just please consider it. Thanks for listening. If you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
You say the Purdue Extension Office takes in chickens?
Purdue Extension's office has given us and listed people to contact.
Yeah, I, thank you. I missed her.
Counselor Elliott?
Do you believe chickens attract possums and raccoons and so on and so forth?
Probably no more than a dog bowl of food, or bowl of dog food.
So, that's a yes?
I'd say any, any, anything that could be potential food they leave outside attracts animals. Whether it's a trash can, whether, I've got raccoons that are opening up my trash can somehow and getting into them. So, as long as you have trash cans, as long as you have dog food, you're going to have possums.
The big blue tubs we have?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's a battle. It's a battle.
Any other questions for Mr. Shagley?
Councilwoman Ollard, may I ask a question?
You sure may.
Since you're testifying before the council here today, Mr. Shagley. I plead the fifth. She's in the criminal proceeding. I mean, I saw a really good picture on the Tribune Star about a year ago, and I'm just, I've been trying to identify the, the source of that.
It was Dobbs Park, wasn't it?
Yeah. The, the other comment I was brought was about loose chickens. You know, whether you let, whether your dog gets out of your yard or your cat and it gets killed by a neighbor's dog, it's your responsibility to keep your animal in your yard. If it gets out, that's not your neighbor's fault, that's your fault. So, if, if someone's hen gets out and gets killed, that's not anybody's fault but your own for not securing your, your animals, whether it's your dog, your cat, or your hens.
Counselor Nation?
Richard, for people who haven't raised chickens before, could you elaborate a little bit on some of the other ways that Mother Nature works you on this? I mean, I know that there are like hawks and other predators that are airborne that some are, some people who aren't experienced might not think about.
I have a friend who's bought over 50 chickens and has lost more than half. Neighbor's dogs, cats, your own dog. I've, I've not heard any problems with cats, but hawks are vicious. We have a lot of hawks in Terre Haute, and a hawk will sit in a tree for hours just watching and waiting for a mistake. And they're protected, so there's nothing you can do about it. Raccoons, possums, just to name a few. The, the other thing about chickens is, you know, what's tricky is coming up is spring break, and there's no dapper dog for hens.
You can't bore them?
You can't bore them. You can't, you've got to find somebody to take care of them. I mean, it's, it's a lot of work to raise hens and to keep them alive. But the reward is, they, like I said, there's a soothing comfort that they can provide and also eggs. And what I don't like about the current ordinance as it is, one, they're illegal, and two, Todd, I could have 1,000 chickens and my neighbor has one. And if you don't like my neighbor, you could live in Idaho and call and complain, and my neighbor would get in trouble. But I'd be fine with 1,000 chickens. Even though all my neighbors are happy, I'd be fine. But you can call from anywhere, complain, it's only complaint-driven, which I appreciate, and the chicken farmers in Terre Haute appreciate. But, it doesn't seem fair that someone from out of your neighborhood, out of state, could call and complain about you and you get cited, when all your neighbors are happy because they're getting great eggs. Fresh, free-range eggs. Any other questions?
Any other questions from the council? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the list, we have Ellie Caldwell.
I'll be very brief. I'm Ellie Caldwell. I live at 2425 North 8th Street, and I also wanted to talk a little bit about the chicken ordinance. I certainly absolutely appreciate what Ms. Thorpe and her coworkers have to deal with in code enforcement. It's not a job I would want to have, and I'm sure that there's a lot worse things than they have to deal with than chickens. And, you know, I think there are a lot of communities that have chickens and have ordinances that allow for them in the community that work for them. And there's a lot of ways to mitigate, you know, bad ownership, and, you know, as Richard said, it is a labor-intensive thing to have chickens. You know, I don't think you're going to have a rush of people going and getting a bunch of chickens that aren't going to take care of them. The people who are going to get chickens on Easter because they're cute and they're chicks are probably still going to go and get chicks on Easter because they're cute. You know, there are a lot of ways that the other communities have managed, you know, that process by creating a permitting process, you know, where you pay so much money, they inspect your area that you're going to keep your chickens to make sure that you are adequately outfitted to keep them safe and, and, you know, not have any public health risk. You know, they, you know, that also provides some funding for that service. Some communities have partnered with other agencies, you know, something like Purdue Extension or a poultry group that would do those inspections for them, and they get paid through the permitting process. You know, I think most people who, who want to have chickens, when they're going through the process of paying for a coop and doing all those things, will be more than willing to pay to have to have a permit and an inspection for them to, to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. And, you know, I just think there's a lot of ways to make this work for our community without increasing the burden on our animal control officers, because I certainly wouldn't want to do that either. But, you know, but when you talk about four or five calls in a year, that's a drop in the bucket to what I'm sure they respond to for dogs and cats and things like that. I mean, responsible pet owners are going to be responsible pet owners, and irresponsible pet owners are going to be irresponsible pet owners. And, you know, I think you can mitigate that with chickens by having a permitting process and an inspection process or something like that, but, you know, I think it's a workable, it's a workable solution rather than just saying, well, we're not going to do that because it's just easier to do it that way. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question on that. She mentioned responsible, irresponsible pet owners. You can be an irresponsible dog owner, and you can be an irresponsible cat owner, but you can't be irresponsible chicken farmer, chicken owner. It just doesn't, it doesn't happen because there are a lot of work, and, and as a result, if you, if you don't take care of them, they will not be there the next day. So, thank you again, sorry for that.
Next on the list, we have Steve Jeffries.
Good evening. My name is Steve Jeffries. I live at 2349 North 29th Street, here in town in the north end. My wife and I own, to make it sound big, a little more than three-quarters of an acre on that block. That consists of eight connected lots that we live on. I thought about it for years, and last year I made the plunge. I bought the beehive. I bought the nuc. I set it up in my fenced-in garden, you know. I lost them on the 1st of December. So, I ordered a month and a half ago, two more hives, two more nucs, let me put it that way. That's the starter of the bees. My lots are 130 feet deep. There's the issue with the 75 feet, obviously, we've all been talking about it. What I would like to say, I'm not an expert, and when it comes to land, Tom, and then last week, I learned more in two minutes listening to, I believe her name was Tabby up here, than I have learned on the internet or reading for two years. That taught me one thing, basically what you were saying, should you have, should you learn about it. I'm going to learn. I'm going to try and meet up with the club and join. They can probably provide me a lot of information in order to make these two new hives that I should get this spring work, I hope. But again, the odds are against me. So, I really just wanted to address the bee situation. They are in my garden. I till my garden. I mow right next to it. I weed eat. And in my garden, I have blackberry bushes that my grandchildren pick from, and they are, they walk right by it, within two feet, within a feet. I sit and watch them, you know, it's just, it's not, they're not an aggressive bee. They're, they're very gentle. So, I just kind of wanted to bring that up, and that's where I'm at. I'm not an expert, but I'm going to learn a lot more after being here the last two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? No?
You mean for him or for anything?
For him. Okay, that's all the, we have signed up on the comment sheet. Just want to make sure if anybody else would like to comment, please come to the mic. I think we've got one lady who hasn't had a chance to speak here.
Well, I was up here the other day, I'm Patty Weaver. I live in the, I beg your pardon?
Your name and your address, please.
I'm Patty Weaver. I live at 9341 East Grove Grove, which is in the county, not in the city. I'm a master gardener. I've lived on a farm for 40 years. I also manage the ISU Community Garden here in town, and I came not to talk about chickens, but I came to talk to bee, about bees. But for a moment, I'm going to mention chickens because I've had, I've had a farm and had chickens nearly all my adult life, and they are a responsible part of your everyday activities, but I don't consider them to be hard work. Sorry. To me, you wake up, you let them out, they run around, they eat, you feed them a little bit, you have, make sure they have water, they lay the eggs, and then at night you close them up. That's about the extent of having a chicken in your yard. We have, build our, we don't have a Taj Mahal, we built it out of pallets, our hen house, so it was rarely, relatively cost-efficient. And they have a little run area that is under trees, so we don't have hawk issues. They don't attract possums, they do not attract skunks, they do not attract coons. We, our bird eaters attract more coons than, than our chickens do. Now, if you were to let them just run in the yard, you would have some deaths. But chickens don't live long either. They only live for about five or six years, they only produce for about two or three, maybe four years. They just don't have a life expectancy as a dog or a cat does. So, you really don't have that much of an issue. There's just not a lot of, chickens just don't stay healthy long. So, generally, that's why farmers usually chop their heads off and eat them after about four years of age. All right, that's it for chickens. Bees is what I came here tonight just to talk about. Managing the ISU Community Garden, it's a two-city block space in the city, downtown practically, downtown in ISU on 11th Street, North 11th Street. We, we have tossed the idea around for, for probably three years now about having beehives at the garden. We actually have a- the garden. We actually have a third city block that we don't have community members gardening on. They garden on just the first two city blocks. The third one is on 12th Street and Eagle and Chestnut behind the liquor store. Everybody knows where that liquor store is. So, they want bees out there, and we've talked to Lynn. And I was actually Lynn's neighbor for, what, 12 years? And his bees never bothered me, and I'm highly allergic to stings. Just last fall, I was bit by, I thought it was millions, but it turned out to be only eight yellow jackets. They're more aggressive than beehive, than honeybees. And we should distinguish honeybees from all the other bees in the world because honeybees are very non-aggressive. I was in Lynn's yard without any protection, and they were swarming all around me and never did I get bit, and never was I afraid of them. Other bees, I'm more terrified of. But at ISU Garden, we would like to have bees, and we've discussed it many times. And then we had a meeting, as a master gardener, I go to meetings, and we had a county, oh, Lord, I can't remember his name. He came to talk to us, and he said that it's illegal in Terre Haute to have bees. And so, I thought, well, I don't, I know 15 or 20 people that live in Terre Haute and they have bees. And so, that kind of, because it's ISU, that kind of just stalled them on their project of having bees. Well, what hasn't really been talked about here is the reason why we have bees and other pollinators in this world. It's because of our crops, our gardens. And I've been gardening for years. And if I didn't have bees and other pollinators to pollinate my blossoms, I wouldn't have a crop. And so, gardening and local foods is another thing that has not been discussed here. But local foods is a huge buzzword. And having honeybees to pollinate your food crops, and that's just not your vegetables and that's your fruits and your apples and your pears and your plums and your grapes and all the other things that we grow to eat. Pollinators are vital, and they are having huge issues out in the wild to keep hives activated and alive because of the attrition of the lack of good places to pollinate anymore with urban towns and taking up all the space. There are no longer places for wild honeybees and other pollinators to live. Monarchs are another big thing that is not a topic here, but there's people who are worried about the monarchs because, again, there are no crops, enough sustainability for those animals, those creatures, to stay alive. And honeybees is another one. The wild honeybees are at a risk. They are terribly risky. They don't have places to habitat anymore. They don't have the flowers and the vegetables and what have you to go and collect their honey. And their life is starting to wane because of that. So, if you really want to be progressive, and I think Terre Haute is a level above, and we should be progressive here, then I think you should limit that ordinance so that more people can have honeybees and have pollinators in their yard and make their community healthier and provide better food and more sustainability. And that's another huge buzzword that's very prominent now in our news is sustainability. And if you vote that ordinance so that people can have honeybees in their property and chickens, then you will increase the sustainability of this community and perhaps more than just Terre Haute alone, but you will also be a role model in having other communities saying, hey, Terre Haute did it, and they're a level above, so why couldn't we do that? And just for an FYI, I have friends, and I'm from Cleveland, Ohio. And I mentioned on Facebook, the social media pathwork to the world, about how we're having this meeting tonight and last week. And so, I had all my friends in Cleveland say, hey, Cleveland does it. And Cleveland is huge. They're enormously huge. And they have an ordinance that they changed about 10 years ago to allow chickens, honeybees, and rabbits on property inside the city limits. And it's an enormously large city limit area. And they have permits that you have to file. I'm not sure how often because my computer's old and I couldn't download the ordinance that was sent to me. But if you would check it and look at into some of these communities that do have chickens that are larger than us or even smaller than us, then you would see that it isn't the issue that you're, that, no offense to code enforcement, and we've called them before for other reasons, but it's not the issue that they fear and they're worried about. It's something that really will benefit and put Terre Haute at a level above. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council?
That's the end of the list there.
Good evening, and thank you very much. My name's Stan Capobianco, and I live at 825 Eastwood Lane, which is in the county. And I'm not a beekeeper, and I do not raise chickens, but I'm here to support both of these functions in our city and in our county. First, let's talk about the bees. Every one of you, this spring, I want you to go to Denning Park. And when you see the little flowers that are growing around on the ground, tell me how many bees you see. If there's not a beehive or a bee box in close proximity, you won't see the bees. Start looking around at these little insects that we want to regulate because we're not seeing them. And I noticed this in my area, which is about 300 feet from US Highway 41 across from the Walmart, about five years ago, that the bee population was drastically being reduced. And a large reason for that is because if you put herbicides or fungicides on your property, you're killing the food for these little insects. My niece decided to raise bees in Allendale. She put three hives out. And within a very short period of time, I began to see the bees starting to come to the flowers that were on the ground or to the rose bushes. And the only reason was that because they were foraging for food, and they weren't within that two-to-three mile radius. So, it was amazing to me because as a child growing up, I can remember, we would have to gingerly walk through the clover to avoid the bees so we wouldn't, one, get stung and, two, kill that little bee. So, as you look at this ordinance, I want you to consider that, what these insects do and how we're going to keep these insects in our lives. Failure to do this with these bee boxes and these beekeepers, we're going to have some serious problems. It's already a national epidemic. So, that's my portion on the bees. Mr. Nation, you asked a question about chickens. What other methods of nature can cause chickens' demise? One of the things I'm concerned about here with the chicken raising is not the fact that these people want to have the chickens, but they are classified as a backyard flock. Several years ago, we had an incident in the state of Indiana with the avian bird flu in Dubois County. And I was part of that. As I worked with the State Fire Marshal's Office, I was deployed to that location for two weeks. One of the key functions that we had was not the commercial flock keepers and farmers, but the backyard flocks. The avian bird flu is transmitted by the wild birds that fly across our backyards. Their droppings can cause these other backyard animals to become infected. So, now, if you're looking into your ordinance, I think something should be placed in there about at least registering that backyard flock so that if there is ever an epidemic of the avian flu, that you can go to BOA, which is the Board of Animal Health here in the state of Indiana, or the USDA, which will come in when they're going to eliminate these flocks. That's the first thing they want to know is, where are all your backyard flocks at? Because they have to send teams out and then take these birds and actually physically take blood samples from them. So, I would like you to look at that component in your ordinance for. But I hope and pray that you do support the backyard flocks and the beehives. Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
I think it's, I appreciate Stan, you standing up there talking about that. I remember that the flu that hit Dubois County.
There was 250,000 birds that we had to euthanize in a seven-day period.
Well, I think, I think we need to look at this ordinance, and you never want to put the pressure, and like Lori was saying, they're so understaffed. If we pursue this, which I think we are, and it'll take a little more discussion on the chickens, it's going to have to be regulated quite a bit. I think there's going to have to be some steps that people are going to have to do. And I think that's to help our code enforcement here, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
For your sir, after hearing the discussion on the chickens, I know these people want chickens for the eggs. Well, a typical chicken will lay up to four years. They can live up to 10 years. After they're done laying in four years, what are these people going to do with the chickens that don't lay anymore? Are they going to keep them as pets? You know, the shelter's not going to take them, and I'm not going to have time, my office isn't going to have time, to wait to call somebody to come and get these chickens because we just don't have, we don't have the tools. We don't have the people. And I just think something that could be positive in Terre Haute is going to be a disaster. Because chickens, pot-bellied pigs, they don't belong in city limits, not in residential neighborhoods. If you want to have chickens, move to the country. Thank you.
Yes.
My name is Ernie Adams. I live at 28 8th Avenue. I've been a beekeeper for 16 years. Have you ever had a problem? Before that, in the 80s, we had chickens. We had them, they had no problems. You know, I have a neighbor that has probably 15, 20 cats. And there's no, like you see rabbits running around? We have none. We have no chickmunks in our neighborhood. I have eight lots, and I keep my hives, you know, there. I have dogs, you know, which stay in the yard. My yard's fenced in, you know, and it's just, without the bees, we're screwed, you know? I mean, that's the bottom line. I mean, you can balance any way you want, but without the bees, we're no more. And I might think about that, you know, but, you know, that's just my two cents. All right?
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. We have a question. This is Councilman Elliott.
How much time does it take to take care of bees?
Okay, today, I have 10 hives. Well, I have 10. I lost four. I just checked them. I have them in my yard. I have them in North Terre Haute. I have them in New Goshen. I have them in West Terre Haute. I have them on Darwin Road. I have one right next to I-70.
I'm talking about one location.
Okay.
Is it a daily thing, a weekly thing?
I check them every week. I go in there and I'll check them, you know? You usually, after you do it a while, you can stand there and watch the entrance, and you can tell what's going on, okay? If they come out of the hive and they take off up, you know, 80% you're good. But if they come out of the hive and they mingle around, you know, and then you know you've got, there's a problem. September, they kick all the drones out. I mean, you know, bees are, I mean, they're not vicious, you know, to humans, but then they're cycle because it's a female-dominated society. You know, a lot of people don't want them, but that's reality, you know? And in September, there is no males. They kill them off, kick them out of the hive. And through now, and even right now, there is no males. And next month, toward the end of this month, they'll start making drone flocks, which, you know, then you'll, then you'll, they'll breed. And they breed, what is it, 60 to 100 feet in the air when they breed, you know? You know, I've been doing, I've been to five bee schools, and I continue to learn because, you know, I'm retired, so that's my thing. But just like today, I lost four hives. That's $1,200. So, any profit I made, I lost for this year. You know, and that freeze we had, we got down eight below because when I got in the hives, the bees have to go into a cluster to stay warm, okay? Then they rotate in and out to keep the hive. Inside of a hive is normally where the bees are. In the summer, it's 92 degrees. And in the winter, they have to keep that ball going. So, you know, that's the reason I lost the hives this time because when we had that freeze snap, they didn't get back into the cluster. You know, it's just, you know, you don't have no control, you know, with stuff like that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
I have a question. If any of the people who have spoken in favor of coming up with a chicken, a portion of the ordinance which would allow chickens, would speak to Lori's concern about chickens that were no longer producing eggs, I'd be interested in hearing what they had to say if anybody else who speaks to that. I don't know if any of those present feel like they can, but I'd be interested in hearing their response to that.
I could try.
Yeah.
Richard's gone. He talks way more than anyone else, so.
We know that.
You know, I mean, I guess the one, one of the things I would say about that is I think people who have chickens, I mean, they're not, they're not farmers. These are pets to them, and I don't think they're just going to dump off their chickens when they don't lay eggs anymore. I mean, I have a 15-year-old dog that pees on my bed all the time, but I still let her sleep in it every day. You know, I mean, again, I think people who are, I mean, chickens, yes, they produce eggs, but these are pets for people who have backyard chickens. They're not, they're not, you know, farm animals that they see as just a commodity. I mean, that is a benefit for sure, but I mean, it's a lot more than that. And I don't think that those people are any more likely to just dump those chickens than somebody's likely to dump an old animal. You know, it happens. There are bad pet owners, but I don't think that it's any difference to, I mean, in my opinion, than having an old cat or an old dog. You just take care of them, you know? Ideally, you would try to space out your acquisitions of them so that they didn't all stop laying at the same time, I think, but, you know, that's, I guess, my two cents about that.
Thank you. Okay, is anybody else from the public that hasn't had a chance to speak that would like to speak?
I was going to make a comment about something you just said. Right before her. Disease avian and salmonella, it was in a note I passed out. It is a huge, multi-million dollar bird, fragile flock, factory farms. They raise immune compromise, homogenously bred, mild-crop chickens that are a far, far greater threat and risk of causing a disease epidemic. On the contrary, keeping backyard flocks can help prevent the spread of avian flu, H5N2 virus. Salmonella is a result of poor food handling processes and insufficient refrigeration. Backyard flocks are not the source nor the cause of salmonella or avian flu infection. Centers for Disease Control has stated in parentheses, in the United States, there is no need to remove a flock of chickens because of concerns regarding influenza. End of quote. And the 2006 grand report states in quotes, "When it comes to the flu, diverse, small-scale poultry farming is solution, not the problem."
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions from the audience?
Back on the chicken thing. When I lived in Illinois, my farm, I had a 37-and-a-half acre farm and a 40-bird flock with a rooster because we wanted babies. I also raised meat birds, which is your heavy white chickens. They usually get to be six or eight pounds, and you butcher them and sold them. We sold them. So, I have butchered chickens before. Generally, chickens, if they become frail and ill, the chickens will take care of them. They don't want an ill bird in their flock, so they generally take care of them. If not, then if they don't, because they'll peck one another. If they get sick or whatever, they'll kind of take care of themselves. They keep their own flock clean and healthy. We were a little worried with ours a few months ago because we had a billiard bird that was losing a lot of feathers on her neck, and chickens will peck that space just because that's the way chickens are. They're kind of cannibalistic. If you feed your chickens, they'll eat everything except onions and avocados. But they will eat themselves, is what I'm trying to say. They will, they will kill their own selves, so you just dig a hole and bury it, and that's done. But the ideal is to keep your flock healthy, and then they don't become cannibalistic with one another. So, to answer your question about what happens with them when they get a little bit old, that's pretty much what it is. When I got rid of my chickens, when I moved from Illinois to here, and I got rid of my chickens, then I had friends that just took them, and they kept them for me until whenever they were no longer good. Chickens do go through a molting. That means they lose their feathers and they grow new feathers, and so you don't get eggs or you get very few eggs. But I've got egg customers. or you get very few eggs. But I've got egg customers, and every one of my egg customers says they've never tasted an egg as good as the ones that I laid, or not I laid, but my chickens laid. Now, I know that's flattering because anybody's home chickens will be as good as, at that, but we feed our chickens, every piece of, when, we feed our chickens every scrap that we create in our house that's biodegradable. So they get all our peelings, all our apple cores, all our avocado picks that they don't like. They get the grass, clippings, and eat all that. They're very healthy birds. They even, even, even ate grape, grapefruit halves, what was left on the grapefruit half the other day. I couldn't believe it. So they, they pretty much take care of our biodegradable material that doesn't go into a landfill. So that's something to think about, too, that if you treat your chickens correctly. So our trash is like a force of what we have had in the past with all the methane gas and everything in landfills, now that everybody's worried about my chickens eat all that. So there is no methane gas that we, that we're producing at the moment. So that's something else to think about. But they do kind of take care of themselves, and if they do become decrepit and aged and to the point, you just wring their neck and bury them. I mean, it's cruel to say, but as farmers, that's what farmers would do. So that would be something that you would want to do with your own personal flock if you had one in the house, in your yard, is you just maintain them as well. I mean, I know they're pets, and, you know, you love, we just, we go out there and watch them. You know, we've had, you know, funny days, and we'll just stand out at the fence and watch them running around and doing stuff. And they're hysterical to watch, and they are relaxing. Somebody mentioned that earlier, that they are relaxing, kind of like sitting out and reading a book. You just sit and watch your chickens do their thing. But, and I don't really think they're work, or I wouldn't be raising them. The only issue that we have is when we go on vacation, who's going to take care of them for us? So we have to do a little phone calling and get people organized. So, and it's a community event at my house when we're on vacation. But other than that, that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we're going to try to close up on public comment so we can try to work interim here and get some things. So at this time, I'm going to turn it back to the council. First thing I want, do you have something to say? If there's any recommendations that anybody would like to make on the council, just remember this. We need a first and a second.
But we cannot change this at this meeting.
No, these are just recommendations.
Recommendations, well.
To the council.
Okay.
So the council as a whole.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we limit that bee, let me get that down to five feet, buffer property line, and then I think, I'm trying to figure out which one that is.
When we're making a recommendation, I'm going to turn the legal here in just a minute. When we're, when we're making a recommendation, do we need to do them one at a time? Like if we have a couple different recommendations?
I think that'd be beneficial. It's 6-8-9, excuse me, 6-8-9.8, excuse me, 0.9, subsection C, 5.
Amy, could I give a point of information here? It's both a statement and question, and, by the way, some of the audience might not understand that I'm here as ex officio because I'm currently president of council, and there are other council members here aren't saying much because they're not on the committee. It's not that the rest of us aren't interested. So I just wondered, I thought the public might not understand kind of what was going on with that. But is it possible in this, you know, we haven't used our committees a lot recently, so we're also all trying to kind of figure out how this can work. Is it possible for us to have a discussion without making a recommendation to the council for amendments to this policy yet, and then potentially the committee would meet again? It seems to me like a couple of things, and Eddie, if I'm wrong about this, please tell me. My understanding from when this first came before council was that primarily you had looked at the Indianapolis beekeeping statute for guidance on this. And what we've heard, is that correct?
I, I did say that in, I was incorrect.
Okay.
I had referenced that Indianapolis did have a beekeeping ordinance.
Okay.
The one that's in front of the council is a, is a model ordinance that's put together by, through the West Log Group.
Okay.
And just one more point, if I may, and I apologize for the reference.
No, no, that's fine.
That is one important point because it's kind of odd how we have this set up. Since it is a committee meeting, only the committee members really are the ones that, at this point, probably, and I don't mean to step on anybody's toes here, but there are definitely no ones that can vote tonight.
Right.
And probably should, no one else should participate in the, in the discussion with regard to the recommendation. It's ironic that we have almost the entire council here making recommendations to itself already. So just, I just want to make that point.
Well, anyway, I, I just wondered as a matter of form, can the committee have a discussion tonight, maybe say they're going to take time or ask you or someone to take time to look at some other factors, or even the information we've received tonight from people who have testified, and then meet again to make recommendations to council? I don't care, but I just wonder if that's, if that's possible.
In committee, haven't we just done a recommendation to the council?
Okay.
The committee can meet as many times as they want.
Right. But even though we make recommendations to the council, once it hits the council, then there can be amendments in the council's discussions and discussions.
I yield. I just had to.
Any, any recommendations that we make aren't the final recommendations. It's just things that we've came out of the committee with and we're presenting to the council. So, who had the floor? I'm sorry.
I had four. I was just talking about the buffer lines. We're, initially, it was 75 feet. I'd like to recommend that to turn that down to 5, 10 feet.
So we have a motion on the floor.
Can I make just a quick observation? Just thinking about some of the properties that I've visited, I think a lot of property owners, including myself, don't really know the exact boundaries of their property. So I wonder if we could make that 10 instead of 5, just to be?
Yeah, that's, no problem. I have it. That's fine.
10 feet.
10 feet.
So I have a motion on the floor to change it as a recommendation from 75 to 10 feet. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second?
And then the other recommendation.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is on this. I'm sorry. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? Pass.
Moving on.
You still have a floor?
I would like to move 6-8-9.9, four, or C4.
What, what page?
This is page 33.
Most of this is on 32 and 33, I guess.
Lots having less than 10,000 square feet shall not have more than four hives. I think we have discussed and we talked, when that 6 to 8 would be okay. So I'll move 6, or 8, I'm sorry, eight hives instead of four.
So you got a motion on the floor, right?
Yes.
To change from?
C4.
C4, from four hives to eight.
And that's a limit of eight?
Yes. Have no more.
Do I have a second?
Any, any beekeepers have any issue with that?
Per that square footage or per your property or in your city?
That square footage, isn't it?
This is less than 10,000 square feet.
Okay.
It sounded ambitious.
Lynn, you and I had talked about this.
Yes. The only thing that I might add is that in order to split our hives, to make more hives, maybe a couple of nukes. And we have those nukes so that we can have an additional queen. If we lose a queen, the hive is technically dead unless they can raise their own. Or maybe you could do six hives.
So you, you want to break it down to six hives and two nukes?
Six hives.
I don't know what a nuke is, but.
Maybe four nukes. Because that would be, you put them together, you have two additional hives. Two nukes makes one hive.
Two nukes, make, okay.
That's a start, that's a starter.
If we leave it at eight, and if we have six, and then four nukes, that's still your eight.
Six and four.
Six and four.
So you want to break it down six to four, or six to eight?
If you will, go ahead and consider two nukes as one.
So what, you have a problem with eight?
No, no, no. Six is good, and then the safe order.
Now, that, this is getting pretty technical.
Yes. We need a, a point of order here.
I just want to point, and I don't mean in disrespect to our EPD officers, but I doubt any of them are going to be, do I even understand the difference really between those items? Again, I think.
As long as they're not to the letter, and we have, for a short time, have a couple of nukes, if those would be planned.
And I think you said that maybe if those, those nukes aren't even technically hives.
Right.
So if we, if you would give rot in before the city court judge, you can certainly.
Eight's good.
So less specific would be better on that one.
I, when we get really technical and we're getting into some intense kind of biology here, I guess.
That's fine. That's my fault. Sorry.
I, so we're giving eight. I would suggest leaving it as a high terminology if we, if we can.
Okay.
Councilman Morris, you saw the floor.
I, again, reiterate that C4, be changed from lots having less than 10,000 square feet shall not have more than, instead of four, I propose eight.
There's a motion on the floor to change lots having less than 10,000 square feet from four hives to eight. Do I have a second?
Sure. I'll second.
Do you have a second? Call for that. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Pass.
Man, I don't know what a nuke is. You scared me here.
It's a starter.
I would, and that's eight. That's the second Winstey of the month?
It's the third.
Third. Thank you.
But you're welcome, any of you to come to my home to see the hives in the back.
I'm staying.
Recommend it if you would. I know I had Amy out. She took a quick look, and I appreciate that.
I yield.
Okay. Councilman Garrison.
All right. Comments and maybe some more questions. I'm not ready to make any motions yet, but can you hear this? Certainly the ordinance is that, I've seen it up there. I know I sound like I'm real restrictive, and I'm really not. I'm just trying to make sure that we, if we're going to make a mistake, we are on the side of caution. One thought that I did not see, but I wondered, should the beekeepers own their property? But it sounds like with the challenges it is to create those, that's probably not going to be a problem anyway. And I didn't see that in any ordinance, so I'm not even going to, I'm not even going to talk about that one. Access to fresh water is in some of those, and the reason why I bring that up is it says that bees are going to search for water, and they'll find it anyway. But for those that have pools, may attract bees. So I don't know. We need to put it in the ordinance. That's probably more of an educational thing. Are you guys talking about that during your education, that it's good to have access to fresh water to keep them close to the hive? I probably don't need to put that in the ordinance, so I'll take that off, which leaves me with two. We haven't, I don't think we have anything in the ordinance about a barrier fence or any type of fencing, either a physical man-made fence or dense hedging, I think has been mentioned in some of these. But I think we, we should talk about that and see if we want to include that. Lee, I'll just ask you. Do you, do you have a fence around your property? I know that some of you are saying that you do. And even though the bees don't really need the fencing because they go up and out, I'm just wondering about small children just wandering into the yard, or somebody curious, or somebody who might want to vandalize a hive, that might deter them from getting in. So that's why I bring it up. Lee, do you have any thoughts? Can I, that's going to?
One, one thing I was, you brought that up, that I was out at your house, and I think that's one thing that I would, kind of, some of the questions you're asking, Councilman Garrison, with being out there and actually seeing it, and seeing it set up, and seeing how everything, I know when I walk out there, I'm like, where's a hive at? Because I'm taking a hive in a tree. I learned a lot, and, and I, I know he's been willing to have anybody that would like to come out to his place, come out there and, and see and, and learn. It's educational. So I just wanted to put that out there real quick because I know, like, with the fencing and stuff that you're talking about, he kind of showed me a lot of different points on that when I was out there.
Sure. I know you put a gaggle on all of here, but anyway, I had him out to my house to show him my loss, my yard, my wife and I owned. And I showed him my garden fenced in where I keep my hive or kept my hive. It's not a security fence. It's probably a four-foot hive ticket. I call it like an old lawn fence. It's kind of more decorative than anything. But it's, you can see the hive through it. You can walk up right to behind it and see in it. It's not like a privacy fence, six foot. I would hate to have to do that because of the size of my yard. I have a lot of area that where it's, where it's not accessible from a side. We don't have side law. It's not a thoroughfare. Is it going to stop anybody walking into my garden gate? Don't know where to find out. But I kind of have reservations about saying, hey, now you need a six-foot hive. You need a privacy fence or anything like that. That would, that would kind of affect you quite a bit, actually.
Okay.
And the Irish garden, the, that we would like to have there, it will be a chain-like fence, mostly for the protection of the hive rather than for the protection of humans. Mainly because it's just going to be a poultry garden space, which is just an open city lot, pretty much. And we don't want anybody to steal any of those products. So there'll be a chain-like fence. I'm not sure how long it'll last, a whole day yet. We can't even know it. Eventually, the purpose will be a chain-like fence.
Okay. Now, the, the second part of this is, some of them have signage up that says something like beehives present. Any of you doing anything like that? Do you have signs up that say that?
That's when you walk into the gate back, back of the house, the difference on the P. R. B.
Anybody opposed it? Show of hands. How would we do that, Eddie, if we wanted to say they needed to have some sort of a sign that says beehives present?
I can draft proposed language. We seem to have kind of some dimensions and some direction on where it was to be placed.
Okay.
And again, a recommendation that somebody would have be added, and then I can draft it for consideration at the actual council meeting.
All right. Well, I won't make any motions on the fence. We can wait until we have full discussion of council. Maybe others will have thoughts on that. But I think I would put something in there about the signage. Beehives present, would like to put that in. I don't know where it would go in this ordinance, but could we make a note to include that, and then I'll make a motion to include one sign per property, something like that?
One second.
So I have a motion on the floor, and I've got a second on the floor to add signage.
That says something along the lines of beehives present, or beehive present.
Of the notice of a beehive.
Yeah.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All of us against? Recommendation passed.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
You yield? Any other council members? Councilman Elliott.
2009, guess we're not really seeing that long ago. So what were the hot buttons or issues that got this to come back?
I'm going to refer to Eddie.
And who was involved in the, in the process and the discussions and so on and so forth?
I know, I think it's.
The history of how this came about.
I know, I think it took at least a year. Didn't you guys spend a year redrafting?
You mean, in fact, the last time it was amended, or during this amendment process?
This one.
The guy's on of this one. Who all was involved in it? And what were the hot buttons and issues that caused it to come out?
and I, I know we had a lot of input from our EPD officers. I think the primary item that put this into gear were some of these enforcement issues that we had, primarily dealing with humane, humane shelter and then partially as it, as that, as that gear was turning, then we had these questions come up with regard to beekeeping and those items. Obviously chickens have been a discussion that's been ongoing for, since I've been in my position and that was discussed with the, with the commission while we were working through this.
So were there any discussions with the public prior to our meeting?
The public?
Last week?
No.
Then?
And they wouldn't have done it.
Other kind of input?
No, and that's not how, this is the public setting for, for.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, I'm time challenged this time of year and I'd like some examples of some chicken ordinances.
Aye.
From some areas that allow it, and I'd also like to know who doesn't allow it in this state.
Okay.
Just, just an array or assortment. I'm not asking for an inventory of every city or county, you know, second class, you know, cities are kind of like similar to ours. I'm just, I'm just curious to know. That's been a big topic of discussion today and apparently there's communities that allow it and communities that don't. If our issue is, well, we don't have time to deal with it, then is that our issue or is that the community's loss because that's our issue? That, that's where I need to form an opinion on how to go forward in that, that regard. And then I also thought, to repeat from reading through what we have, there, I thought there were a couple other hot issues that I, I thought would come up, one or two of which I received an email or two about that, that did not come up today. And I'm not gonna mention those or, or get into those, maybe it's my, you know, lack of understanding of what, what should or should not be a hot issue in the, in this bill. And I recall someone making a comment last week is, there's gotta be a better way or we've gotta find a way or, or something, and, and I guess that's where I'm coming from related to the chickens. So I have no recommendation because I have, I have no way to, to put together information to, to make one, so.
Okay.
I yield.
Councilman Morris?
Just real quick, I, I, we were educated last two meetings about the bees and I feel comfortable with what we did here. I think there has to be a lot more discussion and a lot more research about the chickens. So, I yield.
Any other discussion from the council, recommendations?
If I may, I've got two things that have not come up yet that I'd like to raise post on input from citizens. I remember, Eddie, you wanna stop me from hearing this?
Again, I don't mean to be rude, but.
Yeah. I just don't want anybody getting in trouble.
Many meetings can, I don't.
I'll wait till the council meeting, to the April fourth council meeting, which is, will be of interest to everybody in this room. This piece of legislation's been tabled until the first Thursday of April when everybody will be able to talk about it. So please come back. Okay?
And I apologize, I just.
And I ask, you know, anybody that has any questions or anything, email us or, you know, get all of your questions, anything. We all have email addresses, they're all on the city website. I know I check mine daily. And we can try to get some of those questions, get answers for them so we have things ready for, at the meeting too, on any additional questions. So, is there any other questions from the committee?
Just one last comment. Hey, Dave, I mentioned it, the children's museum has a beehive on the roof. And we've had it there for the last, almost six years. I checked them today and it is, it's there. So I have to replace it. And plus they had an observations hive, a hive in the building, etc. So I don't know if you have to have something special to have a rooftop in, actually in the city.
Okay.
Just for your information.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I had a motion to adjourn and a second. Meeting adjourned.